Okay, welcome back. Appreciate the vacations again, seeing it's a hard process and good to see where we go with people. Mr. Benson, you were ready to get into the CBD Street State Master Plan?
I was actually, I don't know if it mattered, you were lying, but I kind of touched on that as part of the visit place of the CBD Design Standards, so I don't really have anything more to add.
You got any questions?
I do have one question that would have to give reference to the mine in sign. Is that a company policy or requirement for Walmart for the sign to 10 foot? Or is that negotiable?
I think that's a negotiable item. Negotiable item.
I would like to, I made some notes based on the public comments that were given earlier tonight. I think I'd like to, that not, obviously, but few of them. One comment, Mr. Clark made a comment about he owns a business at 6115 Coors Boulevard and did not receive a notice of his public hearing. Reason, he did not, unless he is a property owner, businesses did not receive the legal notice that for the public hearings it goes to the property owner. So, I don't know, if he's a property owner, then that would be an issue. If he's just a business leasing space, that's why he didn't.
I am a business owner.
Not a business owner, a property owner.
I own the building.
Okay, that's something we'd have to check on, maybe, is that we get our property, property mailing information from Jackson County, after this. Ms. Gentry asked a question, what has been done to market this property by the city? The city in 2010, shortly after the church was torn down, they've been on the property. City requested proposals for redevelopment of that site. There was a lot of interest that received questions from potential developers. At the end, we received two development proposals for that property. One was for a low income housing project. The other was for a bridal shop with a wedding chapel, reception room, or hall, or slash engine rooms, and an ancillary retail storefronts for stores or businesses that relate, tie into weddings, those types of businesses. The city, Board of Alderman, made the choice to work with that, with the bridal shop developer or development team. After several months of working with them, that project, the developer, the owner of the bridal shop, did not have the financial capacity to make that project a reality. So, that project died. Since that time, we've kind of, the city backed, that we and the city have considered that waiting for someone from the economy to strengthen. And then, we did not market the property to Walmart or JBC in this case. They, they did approach the city, and that's when the city discussed this project, or this opportunity, and with as far as the purchase agreement entered the city on September, Board of Alderman, September 4th last year, and they're being approved, and an agreement generated to that contract for this property, to something to go through this process. Did not approve the project at that time, it was just simply, yes, well, agreed to sell it, yet going through these steps. And then, Mr. Walters raised a concern about 24-hour operation. And I think as he said, according to Kansas City Star, other than good market is, agreed to limit their hours of operation. As a planning district, that is something the city, you can make that recommendation to limit those hours of work, and also make that determination as part of the planning district to limit the hours. So, that is an option as part of this planning district in that regard. So, you have any questions?
Regarding the hours of operation, are they requesting it to be a 24-hour store? Is that?
We have not had any discussion about their hours of operation at this point, so I don't know if they are or are not. I would refer that to the applicant.
And I'll ask the application.
In a normal course of business, the stores are, in a normal course of business, the stores are 24 hours.
Mr. Benson, I've got a question about this application. If this was to be rezoned to a dash P, and this particular project ultimately did not become approved, what would happen to the zoning of this area?
If, if the planning district overlay would remain in this project, they came back, let's say rezoned it through as he said, they came back, the final site plan, for whatever reason, that's not approved, or is approved, and the project still doesn't go forward, the zoning, the planning district zoning stays in play, or stays in place, rather. However, any future development on that property, any other project, as a planning district, they would have to submit a site plan, and they would have to come back through the Planning Commission and Board of Alderman as part of the rezoning process for approval. So, regardless of what it is.
So, okay, thank you for that answer. So, alternatively, then, we as a commission could put a qualification on this case, stating that revert that to a.
We can't do conditional zoning. We can't, we can't make the zoning condition upon a particular user or project. Our zoning, we make the zoning change, and then to go back, we would have to go through the process and then to take it back.
And is it stipulated by law?
Yes, that's the legal principle of planning use and zoning.
I ask because it seems like we're being asked to make a lot of allowances on the hopes of something happening and changing this. So, I'm just looking what our flexibility and recourse could be, depending on the outcome of this case.
Well, the answer to that is, as John said, is that any, if this, if this particular plan doesn't go forward, any other plan would have to go forward, and any other applicant could come back in and apply to have the zoning revert back or changed to any, any particular zoning.
If I find it questionable whether somebody would come back and ask for us to make this a TS district.
I agree.
If I could add to that, under this scenario that we're talking about, if it's approved, there's a planning district in, for this project, or whatever is design standards, that on campus, if a future project comes back, is that planning district, as we just talked about, is still in place. That gives the developer responsibility, but that also gives the city flexibility. So, if a project comes back, the city is part of that planning district, and then say, you shall have an action set back at five feet. So, instead of having that TS come back and play, you can bring it back in that regard as part of a planning district as a condition of approval of the planning district. So, it's not that the city's totally giving up for any, for any beyond this project, for future projects, giving up that ability.
I think it kind of sets precedent.
Mr. Chairman, I think what Mr. Kapke and Mr. Benson have been saying is this. If the zoning designation changes to AP, no matter who the applicant is, they will always be required to come back before this Planning Commission and the Board of Alderman to seek the approval of the specific site plan that they are promoting. It is within your sound discretion to continue to apply the Central Business District Guidelines if that is your wish. It is also within your legislative discretion to change that designation back if you wish. It doesn't require an applicant, it can be done on the initiative of the Board of Alderman and probably the Plant Commission. So, it's not in concrete or in stone, it is something that is malleable to fit the needs of the community.
Well, actually, I would say the TS district is valuable too. And I question why this case did not come forward with a TS designation and ask for a few waivers instead of a total removal of what you've heard tonight, a community that's very passionate about trying to maintain some of the work that's been done.
We are sensitive and understanding of the amount of effort and time that has been devoted to your town square overlay district. And we have made an earnest effort, as the staff report indicates, to comply with those guidelines as much as we possibly can. There are a few places where it is extremely difficult for us to do it because of the nature of the use. There are a few grocery stores in the metropolitan area that front within five feet of the sidewalk, but I think you'll agree, it's very difficult to find a Price Chopper, a Hy-Vee, a Balls, a 7-Eleven, or any other convenience store or grocery store that does not have parking in front. That is the way grocery stores are built and operated, not only in this community, but throughout the United States. It is difficult for us to meet the standards because they weren't specifically drafted for a grocery store. We've met them in the vast majority of instances, and we are continuing to try to meet them as we negotiate with your staff through the final site approval process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Fields. Just a question for the applicant, and excuse my ignorance, but could you please tell me what the difference between this Walmart is and the other two Walmarts in the area? Because I've never been to a Walmart market, I don't know what's in a Walmart market, I don't understand the operation. So, could you invite me out a little bit?
I think we'll tag team on this one, it's a big question. The larger Walmarts, the supercenters, there's two kinds of vehicles. There's a Walmart Supercenter, and there's a Walmart Neighborhood Market. The supercenter can be upwards of 180, 185,000 square feet, and contain a grocery store and a soft goods, clothing, appliances, electronics, so forth. Very often, it has a tire lube express component, pharmacy, and various other things you would normally find in a department store type environment. The Neighborhood Market, on the other side, on the other hand, is a 40,000 square foot grocery store with a pharmacy. It's smaller than a Price Chopper, or a Hy-Vee, or Hen House, any of those, by about half. And it is strictly a grocery store, and it has all those features that you normally would associate, you know, with a grocery store. Packaged goods, there would be a deli, there would be bakery, so on and so forth, and a pharmacy. A pharmacy inside the store, and then a drive-up pharmacy window for pickups on the outside. So, it's a, it's the grocery component of a supercenter, if you will, without, without all the rest of the stuff. And of course, the attending side. Is that fair? Is that?
So, if I need a slasher, could you go and get a slasher?
Not there, no, you'd have to go to the supercenter for that.
Okay, thank you.
But if you needed a good deli sandwich, you could go to the Neighborhood Market.
Mr. Benson, I think we're kind of at the point in the political agenda where we're ready to discontinue the questions of staff and applicant. Can sync with that?
Yeah, we do, yes, we'd like to, we'd like to go through our staff.
Yeah, I think some part of it would, I guess now.
Actually, why do you, it's actually you.
Yeah, let's go, let's move forward with that.
Okay.
We'll jump in.
The staff's recommendation relates to this application in two parts. One, the first part being the use as a grocery store. The use as a grocery store is consistent with the conference, the city's conference of planning. It is consistent with, it is a permitted use, and consistent with the Neighborhood Commercial District, which is the base zoning. So, in that regard, staff's recommendation is recommend its approval of rezoning. The second part of the recommendation relates to the design aspects of this project. In that regard, staff's recommendation is for approval subject to the following conditions. One, the middle of the final site development plan and design guidelines for the development of the property will show be reviewed by, required approval by the Board of Alderman in accordance with the same procedural provisions as the zoning application, which will mean public hearing coming before this Planning Commission, and then public hearings by the Board of Alderman on the, on the final site plan that gets submitted. Two, development of the site, the site shall not be required to comply with the following sections of the CBD Design Standards unless otherwise a part of the Street State Master Plan. Those sections include, number, commercial site design standards, location of parking facilities, consolidating parking facilities, which is an optional standard within the CBD Design Standards, location of driveways, site lighting, sidewalk paving, bicycle lanes. All three of those are covered through the Street State Master Plan, which they've agreed to comply with in some sense. They are, they are meeting that standard or those standards. Courtyards, classes, and open spaces is also recommended to be waived, again, in the CBD Design Standards. That's an optional element, that only applies if a courtyard applies or open spaces provide. And then, town square gateways, which is not applicable to this, the location of the property. In regards to the building design standards, upper level setbacks and conceding structure parking are both recommended to be waived, they're not applicable to this property, or close to open property. And then, in regards to commercial site design standards, artistic elements, which again, as I mentioned earlier tonight, is an optional design element anyway. Three, three, the final site development plan and design standards for the development of the site shall be submitted prior to the development of the property, shall comply with the following CBD Design Standards. A, commercial site design, following elements, prominent entrance, pedestrian connections, through block passages, site mainstay areas, street trees, and site furnishings. All those items, they're not exactly meeting all those to the letter, but they're, they are close to meeting all of those. B, the second part of number three, commercial building design standards that would be required, are recommended to be required to be that, usually prominent entrance, set two lines slash maximum setbacks, ground floor transparency, weather protection, storefront, building side composition, ground floor details, roof expression, back sites of buildings, screen, light walls, materials, and colors. Third part of the CBD Design Standards, recommended for compliance or integration of architecture and design design. And then, number four, the portioned recommended conditions of the final site development plan shall incorporate the Street State Master Plan ingredients along that portion of the industry of lighting the property. With that, I would like to answer your questions.
I have one question. On B, 3B, the set two lines and maximum setbacks, what does that really mean? The 30 feet, the?
That requires, that, that will get to either moving the building up to the sidewalk along Coors Boulevard, or creating a public space, or a courtyard, or something between that sidewalk.
So, that's pretty much saying, no parking in the front?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Benson, I've got a question. On staff recommendations number one, it talks about final site development plan and the design guidelines and whatnot, going before the Board of Alderman, but not necessarily coming before this Planning and Planning Commission.
Oh, do they wouldn't come before you, this is exactly the same process implemented.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that. So, then, to characterize what we're doing this evening a little bit, at least, the way I'm viewing this is that we are kind of a, this is kind of a formal charade of sorts, looking at this, and depending on the outcome of this, the, this may be the litmus test for this to go before Walmart and consider this seriously, or more seriously, or what, what can be said about that? And I draw that conclusion given the incomplete state of this.
Are you, in regards to whether the applicant is, in regards to Walmart?
Whoever the city is, where the applicant is, where everybody's at. Do you need me to restate the question?
Please, Mr. Chairman.
So, this is a largely incomplete plan that's been put forward, and you're asking, with an incomplete plan, to make a significant allowance. What's the next step for Walmart? What's the next step for the city at this point, given, I mean, what, what, what does this allow you by getting whatever you're hoping to get this evening?
The action tonight would empower the Planning and Zoning Commission, your city staff, and the Board of Alderman to be flexible and to have latitude in reviewing the various design guidelines, and where circumstances warrant, to, to either waive the guideline or modify. That is all that is accomplished with a favorable recommendation tonight. We still must return here with the, with the specific site plan in final form, after staff and Walmart have the benefit of the traffic study, the drainage study, the site, the landscape plan, and an opportunity to negotiate even closer adherence to your design guidelines.
So, my question is, then, why didn't you just bring out a more, more complete plan with some of those elements tonight and ask for those flexibilities going forward?
Traffic studies cost a great deal of money. Drainage studies cost a great deal of money. Walmart is prepared to spend that money if there is a favorable recommendation tonight, and a demonstration that the city understands that some of the design guidelines cannot be completely adhered to. If there is a demonstration of some flexibility, we hope to be able to return to Walmart, get authorization to spend those additional monies, and provide the city with the additional information and data that it seeks.
So, the presentation back to Walmart, then, is that going to be, we've got this allowance, they're showing some willingness, and that the Walmart Corporation is going to view this as what has been presented is 90% of the way there?
I think Walmart is going to view this as a plan that is approaching adherence to your Central Business District Design Guidelines, that it is a work in progress, that both parties will continue to work toward, and no more and no less.
So, you're willing to start negotiating earnest after this?
We've been negotiating in earnest.
You've been negotiating with staff, yes, but now you've become the last of all of them. And that's just a third way, you're just a third way through.
And we completely understand that. We have assumed that your staff has been negotiating in your behalf, and that, that their promotion of the Central Business District Guidelines was something that the Planning Commission would want and the Board of Alderman would want, and in fact, what they are instructed to do by virtue of those guidelines being part of your comprehensive plan. We have taken that seriously, we will continue to take it seriously in the future.
I appreciate that, thank you. I do have another question for the applicant or you, or whoever on the team. What consideration was given when looking at Raytown, some of vacant spaces, are they available?
Tell me when to stop.
Okay.
My job and what I've done for 25 years is do site location work for different retailers, including Walmart. We take a market area and do an entire study of the entire metro area. We looked at the Raytown market, we looked at the existing facilities, we looked at the supercenters. The original objective for the Neighborhood Markets are a supplement, if you will, to the supercenters. For instance, when I first started looking at the Raytown market, the grocery was operating at 61st and Raytown. Once we had approached the city on this five-acre site, they closed. The former, I think, Save-A-Lot, is that correct? I'm relatively certain that's a 22,000-foot facility, and our store footprint of 42,000 feet did not fit on that site. So, that, and, and that was after the fact.
Right.
Okay, so, so specifically, that was that situation. And I'm not aware of any of the other empty large facilities that we should have looked at. But, regardless, then what I do is, once the market study is done for Raytown, competition, populations, income levels, that is all done internally at Walmart, they say, see if you can secure this site. That's when I started the negotiations with the city.
Okay.
So.
I guess part of the reason I asked the question, I listed the stores that were open, and those were retrofitted into existing spaces?
I did all three of those. The one at 103rd and Metcalf was a former retail facility. It was 55,000 square feet. We shrunk it, if you will, to the size that it is, the 42. The facility at 91st and Metcalf, same exact thing. And the store at 75th and Neiman, that was actually a pool hall. I can't remember, there's several others in town, but they had closed, and way back when, that had originally been a grocery store. But, you're right, those, all three of those facilities were rehabs of existing retail facilities. That is correct. They were all the square footage necessary to do.
What makes the 41,000 square foot the magic number for Walmart for this, for Kansas City?
42,000 square feet is the magic number for the entire country. That is the prototypical size for that store.
So, it's the magic number that you hope to hit every time, and do hit every time? Or is it the magic number that sometimes finds its tolluses?
I've, I personally have probably done 75 Neighborhood Markets around the Midwest, and I don't know of any and I don't know of any variation that we've ever done, other than the prototypical store.
Okay. I, I know that you recently, I'm not sure if it was in the last year or so, but opened a facility up in Chicago, in Urban Core.
Correct.
That was a neighborhood market?
Correct. On Lincoln Street.
Was that also 42,000?
I don't know, but I don't think it was. But, but you would have to please keep in mind, a downtown Chicago, a Lincoln Center site would not be in any way, shape, or form comparable to anything that we've done here. Those types of sites can be modified by virtue of the fact that the population is vertical, that large facilities, huge demographics, and you can make those kinds of sites work with that type of demographic. This would not be something like that.
You know, one of the reasons I ask is, is the way this lot is situated, the way this store is situated, it is all alone. There's no opportunity for anything else to develop on this site. You know, it, it's, again, I guess, one of those design elements that this community has said that they want. They want to be able to do mixed use development, and this is swallowing up a whole lot of space. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have for this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
I'd like to ask too, you mentioned a little bit, how, how, I could go on and on and whatever, could you give us a few of the on and ons of the, what would be the six, why Walmart looked at that and said, this is going to be a successful operation here? And, you know, you know, why they picked Raytown, and why is it going to be successful here? You know, what, can you give us any of those, because I could keep going? So, what are some of the reasons they looked at that and said, this is it? You know, this, you know, you mentioned some populations, some, but what are the things that Walmart looked at this and said, this is us, you know, this is, we're going to be there, we're going to contribute to the community? And, and what are those things? Because I felt like, you know, that that's been set, you know? If I was trying to push this thing, I'd be going, here's, here's my, here's my pitch, and I haven't heard it. So, can you give me some more pitch?
A pitch to you for why the store should be there?
No. Why Walmart thinks it's going to be a success? Why they looked at Raytown and said, this is where we want to go? We've got seven, somebody mentioned, I don't know, there's 17, you know, test markets, and I don't know whether that was true or not, I don't know, but I'm just saying, and we're picking Raytown. What, what's, what was the pitch? What, what did they look at and say, this is, we want to be in Raytown, and this is why we want to be there for a long time?
My comment to that would be is that, one, as I said, we looked at the entire metro area of where a location should be. This was a definite pocket, if you will, where they felt the market was not being served.
And my question is why? You know, that's the.
Because, because there is no dominant.
Why it's not being served? And I mean, what made them, what would be elements that they said, I mean, you're saying they, they picked it, I got that, but.
I think, I think where you, I think where you want to go with that, I can't go because it's, it's internal to them. But I, but I had a boss for a long time who used to say, with these types of questions, don't tell Babe Ruth how to hold the bat. Point being, they're a relatively successful company, and, and do a relatively good job of picking sites, operating stores, and as comments made in the past, to picking up and moving and going somewhere else. I see that as a positive thing, especially in my business. From the two stores that Walmart presently was in and formerly was in, in the city, their business grew, and they did so well that they had to move and expand their operations to the present store that they're in today on 350 Highway, which is a testament to the success that they've enjoyed in the city of Raytown. They feel, for whatever those reasons are, that all the elements are present in downtown Raytown for a grocery store to be successful, period. So, all of those components that go into that decision-making process, I don't know, because I'm not physically there. But they have enough confidence in Raytown to be able to make the investment that they're going to make to put a store at that location. Thank you.
I'm going to let you get away quite quick, Mr. Bryant. Oh, okay, I do have a question, okay. Yeah, thank you. I have a question about the southeast lot.
Southeast lot?
Yeah, the one in front of 63rd.
As in Fox Drugs?
No, the.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Fraternal Order of Police on the other side. I'm sorry.
The cutout depicted there now.
Yes.
Now, the parking lot.
The parking lot itself.
Yes. Oh, adjacent to it.
Why, why is that a value at this point? Since there's not going to be a gas station there, why not just leave the existing buildings?
Well, at the risk of possibly offending those property owners, once we decided that the gas station would not be a part of the facility, this is going to be a brand-new, what we think relatively nice-looking, expensive building, and there are properties that front that along 63rd that we felt deterred from the look of trying to redevelop that entire property. And so, at the very least, we thought those two buildings, if they were removed, would help the aesthetics of what would happen behind. And we're also hopeful that we're able to acquire additional properties along the frontage to possibly have other uses for.
So, are you suggesting you are trying to acquire those other properties then?
Without ruining all of my negotiations, I guess I'm laying myself bare here, yes, I am.
So, okay, well, and that, that sounds great, potentially, I'm not sure if the property owners agree with that, but.
That's one of the reasons I hate having these discussions in public forum.
And I want to understand the intent. Is the intent then to just continue the parking lot? Or is it to redevelop these and to, redevelop this into something pad size or something?
Architecturally, engineering-wise, to the best of my knowledge, we have our parking field and the necessary amount of car parks for the store to work. So, if I can acquire additional properties, either on my behalf, other users' behalf, and not necessarily on Walmart's, or possibly on Walmart's behalf, we would definitely like to acquire additional properties.
Okay. So, I have another question, at least. Would, would Walmart then, and the future possible owners of these properties be amenable to the concepts of shared parking space, one of the tenants that's kind of being asked to be removed tonight, through our, you know, through the case that we're considering this evening?
I apologize, because I'm not sure I understood.
Well, so, one of the things.
These are hypotheticals we're talking about.
Yeah. One of the design criteria that we have is to have.
Shared parking.
Shared parking.
Okay.
You know, and I think, I think at some point, we would like, it might make sense to reintroduce those concepts.
Okay.
As future development comes along.
Okay.
And I just, I don't know if and when the time will be to introduce that, maybe on the final approval if this goes forward, that would be a contingency for this. I'm just trying to get a feel for the, you know, temperance of that idea.
Okay, if, if I, if I understand, we're going to make up a hypothetical situation.
We are a little bit.
And I'm going to say that tomorrow, I acquire the Fraternal Order of Police's property on the southeast corner, and forgetting everything else, I acquire it, and I scrape that building. I now have a vacant lot. And what you're saying is, would there be the possibility to share parking with that lot with a potential project on the Walmart site? And I would say, yes, but from a, and engineers helped me, there's a pretty substantial grade difference.
Right.
From the properties on 63rd, then there's going to be a retaining wall that would be on the south end of the proposed grocery store site. So, I'm not really sure how that would work, but it could work, yes, to answer that hypothetical situation.
Okay, well, it's certainly to guarantee some traffic along the post sidewalk, I guess, that would connect the two properties, where they could see the link between elevations.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, it really isn't a question, but maybe back before most of what the Main Street Association presented, we had created quality places, and we started a lot of these design guidelines, and I have the chair that committee, so I buy into these design guidelines, hook, line, and sinker, at least I did at the time. And after I have reviewed them, okay, I found a few that I think are a little, maybe, we didn't know what we were talking about, maybe we shouldn't go into that, but they're, they're, so I would be more, I would be, have to be more flexible than most people in the audience. However, there are things that I'm not flexible about. One of the needs, the parking in the front, I will not vote for if there's parking in the front. I certainly will not go for a 10-foot monument sign, and I would not, I'm opposed to 24 hours. Everything else that I have a problem with is being addressed either by the city staff in their, their recommendations, or by the letter that came from Walmart to the city staff. So, those are my only things that I still have a problem with, that the parking in the front, the 10-foot monument sign just don't fit downtown.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Benson? If I have a question, I'll just stop. Just a point of clarification, so I'll make the chart, I understand your, your comment you just made. When you say no parking in fronts, when I look at that site plan, there's parking, 30% of the way you're doing it, south of.
Okay, well, I was, okay, Blue Ridge Boulevard.
Between the building and Blue Ridge.
Right, and I thought that was what you were addressing when I asked, well, like I was on the commercial building design stand, it said two lines and maximum setbacks, and you said that that did mean no parking in the front.
That, that's correct, I just want to make sure we're on the same page, if you were including the park between the building and Raytown Road, or?
No, no, I'm strictly, I'm strictly talking Blue Ridge.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bryant?
I have a couple of questions. How many employees do you have working in an eight-hour period at the store?
I'll get that, I'll get that information for you, I'll have it to you by tomorrow, the total employment in the facility.
Well, if you put this many stores together, you should know that by now.
I, I never get involved in the operations. I do the real estate side of things. There are 65 to 90 associates hired in the stores, but in a period of an eight-hour shift, I don't know.
You have 22 parking spaces in that southeast lot. That isn't going to hard to make a dent in that.
In the six, in the 65 to 90?
I can propose to that southeast lot at any parking on the 63rd Street side.
Well, as I said, the 65 to 90 car, the associates hired, that's in the course of a day.
I know.
They're in two, three different shifts, so, but.
Well, you're talking 30 to 40.
Correct.
Mr. Benson, was the store on Blue Ridge that is now closed ever mentioned?
By the sounds?
Yes.
I, I don't know, I have to defer to your claim on that. I need to look on Cole, not myself on, and I don't know that how to descend and talk with Mr. Cole on site permission, I wasn't involved in those discussions, so, my, my involvement with this project is, follows once the board of Alderman approved the agreement.
We have a grocery store on 63rd and Winston, there is nothing, other than Walmart at Blue Ridge, up that north side of town.
There's an Apple Market at 47th and Blue Ridge.
Well, that's Walmart, basically.
Well, no, I'm talking.
I know it's not Walmart, but it's in the same area.
Right, right.
And I am also opposed to the 24 hours. I don't think, with as many residents that live in the downtown area, that we need to have a 24-hour store down there.
I just wanted to have one comment about the parking that is on the side, and I know staff, and we've had several conversations about that exact subject. It's been brought up many times that that parking isn't needed on our site, that there would be street parking to facilitate the parking necessary for our project. The concern Walmart has with that is, it is off their property, they don't have the security cameras on that property, they're not in control of the lighting off, on the off-street areas, they're not, it's more difficult to control their customers if they are pushing shopping carts out into the, into the parking on the street. If we can keep everything on our site, we feel we control that and, and better police. It was mentioned a few times, safety. This is a much smaller store, as we mentioned several times. We've got state-of-the-art lighting, and you will see that in our, in our submittals and our, and, and with the LED photometrics, but it's safety primarily is a concern why we want to keep that parking on our site. I just wanted to make.
Okay, I understand that, but does that mean that you do not agree with the conditions, but what about the staff? Because it's already in there. From what I understand, it would be 3B.
You know, 3B, the second item.
Uh-huh.
That is one that I have circled.
Okay.
The chairman made a question, I believe it was, earlier, is, or do we feel we're 90% complete? And I was going to get up, and I didn't say anything, as Mr. Bryant had fielded the question. With regards to 90% complete of, of our presentation, no, we're not even 5%, if that. From where we would go from this to the final package and that site plan approval, you know, there's so much work to be done. What we're really here tonight is, let's look at the big picture. Is this something that the city is willing to work with us on, on this rezoning? That is why, and Mr. Bryant mentioned, it's not only dollars, it's a lot of commitment, it's a lot of other things that go into that final package. And like I said, we're not even 5% there. But before you knight is the 1G site plan, and like I said previously, this is the layout that we would be moving forward with when we do prepare those detailed site plans and the traffic studies and landscape plans and etc.
I have a question for you. I was understanding your, your answer there, and some of the design criteria that we have. Since Indiana's not in, I'm taking, why is it that there's not an ability to put a second floor on this building, allow for something that's ties to the design plan that has been kind of envisioned by this community for this area?
I'll, I'll let Bill field that one.
I'll let Bill field that one, thank you. Not such an easy question. A two-story structure presents problems in vertical circulation, in structural integrity, people moving safely, and it's a business model in the neighborhood market framework that Walmart just simply doesn't entertain. And it's certainly something that we can take back to them and express your desire, but like Mr. Clayton, we've done, I don't know, a couple hundred neighborhood markets across the country. I've never seen one that's a double-decker.
Did Chicago have a double-decker or triple-decker?
No, the neighborhood markets are not. There are some double-decker supercenters, but not a neighborhood market. The footprint just doesn't support the, all the things that go into making a two, a two-story facility practical. At least, that's how Walmart has explained it to us.
Thank you. Other questions from the board this evening? Mr. Benson, at this time, there's, I'm going to be a little dead from the agenda. We've had a lot of comments coming this board to the applicant, to the staff, and I would like to open up just briefly the opportunity for anybody to come back from the audience and make any further comments that they have.
Steve Gunther, Raytown Main Street, and also resident. Regardless of what or how city staff tries to create a sense of, there's no need to follow the directions, there is a need to follow the directions, okay? Their recommendation, to me, seems really not in sync with all the deviations that they talked about. The fact is, this building doesn't face Blue Ridge, it faces 63rd Street. So there is a huge parking lot in front of them, okay? And your decision tonight is the decision to uphold the wills of the people. And your decision, you know that, I mean, you said it earlier. And the consensus that's been here definitely has stated that the residents of Raytown that came out do not want to change their town square, town square overlay image, because it's the image that we want to build on. Now, I'm willing to wait, as a citizen, for something better to come along. And I've heard from a lot of other citizens, and especially the Main Street group, we don't want to shortcut the possibilities of any future development just for the sake of getting one development that will eventually tear down even all the rest of the buildings on 63rd Street with maybe a possibility, hypothetical possibility, of putting a couple of them back. I mean, I don't ever see that happening if they tear them all down. But that's, that's my opinion. I hate to see us do something like this when we've heard from the mayor saying that we're this close to getting some things done on the Rock Island corridor. And with the possibility of future light rail, whenever that might be, it might be 20 years, but the possibility of the Katy Trail extending through is relatively soon with the approval of that, if that goes through. The potential for our community then to develop is extenuated past what we even can imagine the possibility would be for mixed-use, multiple-story buildings. We talk about how Chicago has all these multiple-story buildings and they can facilitate that. Well, the possibility is, we've seen through different design chariots, the possibility that we could have five, six, seven-story buildings downtown because we'd be on a transit location. And that's what normally happens around transit stops. You get higher density developments in the residential core, and you can support the grocery aspect of it. But we will, I mean, look at what they're proposing. It's a sea of asphalt with a small building, relatively small building, opposed from the possibility of what could really be there. I'm sorry, I'm willing to wait, the Raytown Main Street Association is willing to wait. You don't have to say yes to this. You can say no, and they can still take it to the Board of Aldermen, but you will at least be doing what the citizens of Raytown have asked you to do. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, we're in the same room, we're in the same room for five minutes.
Chris Merrill, 10815 East 58th Street, Raytown, Missouri. Walmart is a very, very intelligent corporation. You don't get to be the world's largest corporation without being very intelligent. They go and open up hundreds and hundreds of stores a year, and a majority of these stores are all government-assisted, TIF-funded, tax-abated properties. Then wham, all out of the blue, they're going to offer us 22.5% above market scale for our property. For no, no good reason. Maybe that property is worth a lot more than we think. You know, maybe Target would give us a million, Costco, million-five. Or, we could divide that up into 15 places at $500,000 a spot.
My name is Ed Clark, 6115 Blue Ridge Boulevard. You know, I notice you get down Blue Ridge, you're going to be seeing a 13-foot wall in that right, on this top part up here, a 13, you said it was 13-foot hiding, hiding where the trucks are, or from between the library?
The wall itself is seven.
Seven, but I thought you was going to put something on top.
It would be a screen wall.
Yeah, but I mean, it's tall, it'd be 13 feet high, right? So you'd be able to see that you go down Blue Ridge. I think that'd be an eyesore. Number two, I don't see any place at all to put trees or any kind of shrubbery, because it's all asphalt, like the other gentleman said. And I have a building, and I've been there for 30 years, in my own building, and that car knocked my sign down. My sign was 10-foot tall, but you guys only wanted me to let me put a 5-foot sign up, but these guys can waver it and put a 10-foot sign up. I don't like that, and I'm against it.
Greg Walters, 8950 East 60th Street. I just wanted to re-brief, briefly revisit the 24-hour operation, and I do want to say I appreciate the comments from the two ladies who spoke to that issue. Please consider this. This area, besides not being a heavily commercial area like we are on 350 Highway, which is designed for heavy loads of traffic and large trucks and people coming and going en masse, is a small neighborhood area. It's not just the neighborhood, but the neighborhoods around it that will be affected by this as well. There are no large commercial areas around it, except for the downtown area, downtown area itself. So you'll have all of the neighborhoods spreading out to both the east and west sides of the city, which is only two miles in width, which will be affected by the traffic that'll flow through there. I was, as you know, I was on the city council for 25 years, give or take, and I represented Ward 1 where the first Walmart went in. 67th Street, before the first Walmart went in, in Raytown, was a street that went east and west, in the middle of my ward. It had very limited signage. Due to Walmart, the traffic flow on that street was increased so much that the city had to go in and strip the street, and also put in stop signs where there were none before, because people found that this is a shortcut, this is a faster way to get where we're going. You're creating a destination that will have a detrimental effect, in my opinion, to the quality of life going out from the center of that area. I do have a question, and I don't know if this is proper enough for these gentlemen here. One of you, I believe this gentleman here, asked, or stated that Walmart's plan was to have a 24-hour operation. Would they find it acceptable to continue to operate if you said, no, you cannot have a 24-hour operation, you have to go 9 to 9, 6 to 9, something like that? And I think that this is an issue that will come back again before the city council. I would hope that you would give a recommendation, first of all, to say, no, you cannot have a 24-hour operation, because if that is a deal breaker, it would make more sense to do it now, to make that decision, than to waste a lot of meeting time and spend, I'd probably be out of here about midnight, is what I'm guessing. So, that's just my thoughts on that. If you can have any more discussion or consider or motion to see whether the committee sets on it, that would be appropriate. I appeal. Thank you for your...
Jeanette Gentry, 11000 East 57th Street, Raytown, Missouri. Center 63, the Save-A-Lot store, used to be a Blantons IGA, 40,000-square-foot building. It had one wall put in the middle of it. Lot at that center is vacant. What about it? Four tenths of a mile to the east, good opportunity. Obviously, city staff has not done anything to, to sell this property. I mean, Mr. Benson answered the question, he said that there was a request proposal put up when the church was scored in in 2009. They had two responses, one was not appropriate, the other one fell through, and it's kind of, it kind of tamed, it's set there. Give us a chance, come on, we're just now getting there. You know, they came to us for a reason, because they know we're just now getting there. Give us a chance to market the property. If it's still vacant in five years, let it come back. Might be a different story. Give us a chance right now.
Beth Kurzawa, 1010 East 56 Terrace, oh my God, give us a chance. He's been sitting there vacant for how long? I'll tell you, I went to open a water account for my business over at Raytown Plaza. They couldn't find it in the computer, that address. She typed it in two, three times, she said, that address doesn't exist. I said, oh yeah, it's just two blocks over, just two blocks over here, I'll take you, I'll go show you. She had to go pull the physical records, because nobody had been at that address since You want to wait another five years? It'll all be gone. It'll all be gone. Put something, if it's not Walmart, if they can't conform to what you want, put something in there, but get off your proverbial thumb and move. This is the problem with Raytown. We drag our butts, and we don't do anything. And that's why people are leaving, that's why they're moving out, that's why the property values are going to go down. Not because Walmart's moving in, but because people are leaving. Business is leaving. That's what makes property value go down. And I am a homeowner here, and a business owner here. We raised our kids here. We don't want to see Raytown go down the tube, but my golly, do something. Don't wait another five years, are you kidding?
Diane Kreizig, 10801 East 83rd Street. Well, I happen to believe that Raytown's really moving forward. I love the new Aldi's, I love the new IHOP. I love the possibility of the dealership getting new development on that property. And I do want to mention that things are happening. I was part of helping make the first Raytown Arts Festival in Raytown with, working with the parks. What is significant about that is what people said to me, we have our own, we don't have to go to Lee's Summit, we don't have to go to, you know, these other places, we have our own now. You've heard the people, we want our own town square. It makes, that's what a real town, it always has its center and things come out. Otherwise, we're just a suburban blurb. That's all I have to say.
Lisa Brianbach, at 1110 West Walnut, Independence, Missouri, owner of Doughboys, a doughnut shop. My husband and I will be climbing out of bed at midnight and starting doughnuts, and we will be serving doughnuts for the Raytown School District, for Raytown, and for Raytown South, and they sell our doughnuts. I'm very concerned about the school district and what this will mean to the school district. It's my understanding that if there is a bomb threat there, which there are bomb threats at their stores, that the school will go on lockdown till 7:30 at night, and that's what I've been told. And the libraries right there, what teacher and what librarian's going to want to have to live with those odds? That's going to be really tough on people. I just really hope you really consider all, all the consequences that's going to become out of this. I believe our children and our families and our businesses deserve better.
Would the applicant like to come forward and respond to any of the comments at this time? Bill, sir. Any other questions of the applicants, Mr. White? Well, several people on this commission did bring it up, and so did others from the audience. Wouldn't it be a deal breaker if there wasn't a 24-hour operation? Because I think that may be the consensus.
Deferring to counsel in terms of, for the store itself, none of us here can give you that direct answer. My suggestion would be, for whatever it's worth, is that if you were to choose to approve this application with that as a condition, we would have an answer back immediately. But I don't think any of us sitting here, given what we have invested in this project, and given, obviously, what a lot of other people have as well, to give you an answer, that it is an absolute deal breaker, I just don't feel comfortable saying that. So, we would like the opportunity to visit with our client with that as a condition for your approval.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant?
Okay, this is not to think that I don't want to listen to the community, but would the attorney please tell me what is the purpose of the planning zone commission? I have not been under the impression that it was necessarily to follow the wants of the community, that it was more of what fits and what's legal and the designs and everything. Maybe I totally misunderstand, it's not saying I don't want to follow everybody else. I just want a kind of definition of why we're here.
You're probably asking me to give you a semester of law school, my term, and I'll, and I'll do my best. No, you are not just to hear the public, but you are to hear, to give the public an opportunity to be heard. You are... You are also to consider the governing documents on land use and the reasons for those documents and the reasons for the direction that they give, and you're to apply those to the current circumstances and try to give a recommendation to the elected officials from a group that is more focused on land use than on the general operation of the city. Remember that your Board of Aldermen have a very broad scope. They have to run everything from the budget to repairing streets and sewers and all of that kind of stuff. And you are the body that has the corporate memory and the corporate education and the expertise to deal with land use issues. And land use issues are felt to be important enough that a special body is set up to advise the Board of Aldermen on those issues and take into account what the public says, what the documents say, what the economic and factual situations are at the time, and to give a recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson, I have a question for you. Looking at staff recommendations, if I was to try to grade this application, I guess, what is complying versus what isn't? I guess I have a score of 57 percent. In baseball, that's awesome. In grade school, I'm in trouble. But that's the way I'm, I'm trying to quantify this, and I'm wondering if the staff has kind of looked at it in that light or...
To be honest, we started down, looking at it in that light before when we initially met with the applicant. The site, the concept site plan, one half that's attached to the letter from Mark Bryan on Prop. 87. We reviewed that with respect to the city's, what would we say, plan requirements, we provided a comment letter back. As, who said it earlier tonight, when we met with them to go through those comments, they told us to address those comments, they get into a cost issue without, a substantial cost issue related to Stormy, Tractor Study, engineering for the site improvements and things like that, that without having, as was being discussed earlier, without having Walmart on board, is it definitely, yes, would this project for exist? After tonight, it's all so after Walmart, they make a decision to say yes to the project or no to the project. So even if this project, if the board says yes to the project, Walmart still could say no to the project, it would die. And wouldn't go forward, they would come back with anything further. They're waiting for that approval from the city as well as Walmart before they start to expend those costs. So, that was the first kind of path we were going down with them on the development review process. As a follow-up to that discussion, that's where Mr. Bryan and I had a couple of conversations about taking the stuff back and looking at it in a different, in a different approach to this project of Crest Creek Development Subdivision, just down the street from City Hall here, is a planned district development. And given it's a residential development, it's still a planned district development. That project came to the city with architectural, or architectural and site design standards to the city as a planned district. Those standards were approved as part of that planned district. Every time a house comes, a house plan for construction in that subdivision comes to the city, we review those house plan or building plans with respect to those design standards. And then based on its compliance with those design standards, we made a decision to approve those, approve the plans and permission issued, and the house needs to be constructed or it doesn't comply, we give comments back, so it doesn't comply. So using that as an example is where Mr. Bryan and I, in our conversations, came back to this, given that Walmart needs some assurance from the city, as I think Mr. Ryan said earlier tonight. So by developing the design standards, that if you all and ultimately the Board of Aldermen approve those, that gives them guidelines in which, in fact, that site, the future final site plan as well as the building, architectural plans, those more details. So this is, in that sense, this is a two-step process. This rezoning application is established in the planned district that along with that comes the design standards that sets the direction. So when they come back with the final plans that give the more detail, I think Mr. Chairman, that even after you were, the ones you were with, that you're kind of looking for, it would break, they would get those standards that then when they come back, not just staff would do that, but then when it comes before you all, you could look at those in regards to those standards and the Board of Aldermen as well. And then through the public hearing process, that would be involved with that, the public would have that opportunity also. So I, to use your analogy, a scoring or grade, we haven't gone that direction in that regard, so we have an approach from a different angle.
Kind of a question for the attorney. If we are not supposed to listen to the citizens and their feelings and what they want, that means, he didn't say that, he said we are supposed to. No, wait, okay. But we are supposed to learn all the legal things. My question is, why aren't we giving them voice if we're not going to listen to them?
If you heard me say that you weren't supposed to listen to them, then I misspoke.
No, I didn't say that.
Because you're definitely to take into account what the public says. That's the purpose.
But you also said that we really need to learn the legal, all the legal things that go on with this, and it's my understanding that that's what we have to make our recommendations on.
Again, I apologize, my communication was not very good. I think you take into account a number of things, and I think it's up to you to give each of those things the weight you believe they deserve. And I did not mean to indicate anything deserved, that from my standpoint or my standpoint or legal standpoint, that any of those elements had more weight than the others. I think that's up to you to decide. That's the discretion that is given to you. But to me, the function of your board or of your commission is to hear the public and to view the legal documents that control the land, to take into consideration the economic conditions and fact situations as they exist today. And the element I left off, and I apologize, is to listen to your professional staff who has expertise in that area. And you're to give those elements the weight you believe they deserve and to make recommendations to the Board of Aldermen. And I did not mean to insinuate that, in my view, one of those should weigh more than the other, or one of those should control your actions more than the other. I think that's up to you. But those are the elements that I think you take in when making your decision.
Ms. Doc?
Before we get into a vote or a motion, I would like to ask the board, or the commission, if everybody would consider putting in two more conditions, one being that they operate less than 24 hours a day, would mean not setting their actual time, less than 24 hours, and that we allow a maximum of three five-foot monumental signs. Up for discussion?
So, I guess my question is, is stipulating a size of signs or just to comply with the sign ordinance?
Yes. But I don't know what the sign ordinances say about the number of those signs. I don't remember.
It depends, if you're talking to sign ordinance, would allow them a monumental sign on each front, that's the sign ordinance.
Okay, so could be maximum four of them.
Right. The CBD design standards don't allow monumental signs in this area.
Oh, you're kidding, I didn't know. That's been too many years ago. What do they allow, just signage on the buildings?
In the Zert, that's correct, because it depends on the building to be up on the street.
Okay.
So theoretically, you would have room for like a sign or a deed for it.
Of course, in this case, only, it'll only be on the street on one side. And they'll have access from all the sides, so will they see the signage on the, if it's attached to the building?
I can't answer that because I don't have their signage.
Right, it's hard to make decisions when you don't have the details. Okay, well then, I would like to add that if they do use monumental signs, that they not be in excess of five.
Might I suggest that the appropriate procedural mechanism would be for there to be a motion on the plan itself, either to approve it, approve it conditionally or deny it. And then what you would be suggesting would be a proposed amendment or stipulation for additional condition.
That being said, it's a perfect segue. I'm looking for a board decision to recommend approval, conditional approval, or deny. Mr. Chair? Yes, I got it, thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And I will seek a motion from this commission. Mr. Chair? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to deny rezoning of the properties located at 6200 Flurid Boulevard, 10028 East 63rd Street, and 10016 East 63rd Street, from the Neighborhood Commercial to Town Square, Poplar Lake District, NCTS to the Neighborhood Commercial District, and Plan Zoning, Poplar Lake District, NCP, for, due to the loss of mixed use in a key location, to honor all of the thought and time put forth before us, as well as the discussions and deliberations that we've had here today.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any additional board discussion at this time? Ms. Doc, would you please call a vote?
Yes, that is to deny, correct?
That's correct.
Ms. Hartwell?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Doc is no, and Mr. Wilson?
No.
We're four and four.
This is new territory for the commission, council, you can have a split.
Procedurally, the motion that was made did not pass. It takes a majority to pass. It did not pass.
Okay. So at this point, we can still, I guess I entertain some additional board discussion. I think, are you saying then it did not, since it did not, it goes forward now?
No. No. What I'm saying is that it did not pass. Appropriate action could be another motion stated in the affirmative, or a motion to adjourn, or a motion to move on. Or continue.
If we would move to continue, exactly what does that mean? We all re-again and go through the same process as the beginning?
There are basically two motions to continue. One is a motion to table it, in which case it goes on the table and it stays there until there's a motion to bring it off the table for some reason. The alternative is a motion to postpone it or continue it to a date certain, at which you could consider additional information. You have another member that could be present or something else, but you basically have two motions to continue. One is to put it on the table, in which case it is through until somebody brings it back. The other is to continue it to a time certain, at which time it will come back up before you as old business, and another motion can be considered.
Can we also, as a third option, discuss it again amongst the commissioners and seek another vote?
You could either, well, you can't reconsider the motion that did not pass unless somebody voted, well, nobody voted with the majority, so you can't reconsider that motion. Another motion could be made. Either restating that, well, not restating that motion, because that motion's not planned. Right. No, I understand. You could state a motion in the affirmative and open that to discussion.
Okay, those are our options, and I would entertain a motion, Mr. Lightfoot?
Well, back to board discussion. Okay, Ronan. I think we should discuss continuing this to a date certain where we have more information. We're trying to make a decision with a whole lot of noms here, and I don't think this is something that should be tabled. Definitely, I think we should make a decision on this soon, but I think we need a little more information. One of the main factors is going to be, I think it'll probably be a consensus of the board that it's not going to be a 24-hour operation. I think we'll at least agree on that in the majority if it were to pass. So that's something we can have an answer back, they said, right away. In discussion, is that something that others on the commission think is to be considered? Or do you have any other ideas, other discussion items?
Are they willing to go back to Walmart and ask those questions if we don't approve this first step tonight?
Could you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
Okay, well, they were going to go back and ask these questions, and we could have an answer by tomorrow or whatever from Walmart if we pass this first step. But we're not going to pass the first step tonight, we're going to postpone if that's what we go with. And I was wondering if they were willing to ask that question or two before we make decisions. It's really very difficult to make a good decision with very little detail. I have some, I have some problems with that.
Good, good idea. I suggest, and probably not appropriate for me to suggest, but I could, you could move to continue to a date certain, and in that motion, ask certain questions or pound certain questions that you would like the answers to before that date, if you could agree on a limited number of issues.
Mr. Benson, given that this possibility, what would be a date that could work? Keeping in mind that it's only in everybody's interest to keep this moving so we can make these decisions in the affirmative or whatever it falls to and...
Your next regular meeting date is May 2nd, which is week from tonight. The only hesitation I have on that is, I don't know, depending on the question, the information you want brought back to you, I don't know if that did one, gives enough time for those answers to those issues or to be addressed or questions to be answered. Secondly, factor that you have is if you want to pack it, send out prior to the meeting that you have that information for meeting, that condenses that time even that much more. The other aspect, and I'll defer the applicant's on this, I think there's some time, the agreement with the city on the purchase... the agreement with the city on the purchase of the land, or the contract, I believe, has a, coming up at the end of this month, but I believe it has a extension built into that contract, but I, I'm not as sure, probably Mr. White, or the applicant is on that, so that's another factor. Beyond May 2nd, technically, this room's available on Thursday night, so I, without knowing the calendar for every event in here, the rest in May, I'm speaking out of turn a little bit. The other option would be June 6th, planning commission, which would be five weeks later from now, so I think that does create some issues timeline, timeline wise potentially, but there's be more time for issues. Again, I don't, I think there needs to be some discussion tabled, unless it's, we're all hired, we just want to table it and come back and continue the discussions, one thing, if we want answers to things, I think there, there needs to be some correction on what those issues are.
I think we need to find that, I would be in favor of that, and then, given, given that we need to get answers from an applicant, given that the, that staff needs to probably update us on what those answers are, would you need to develop a whole new packet or just do an addendum to this one?
Probably do an addendum.
So, would next Thursday for the regular meeting be a time that can work for, we were already going to meet here probably, but potentially, but what, what does staff see as barriers, if any?
Again, it just depends on how much time is needed to bring the information that you're all going to ask for, particularly if we're writing the staff or staff to gather it, it's something we need to gather, so next time, your packet will probably, six, seven days in advance, probably be looking at a day or maybe two days in advance.
Thoughts from the board here?
I won't leave you on one week. I'm not sure if you know what that means or something.
Well, I mean, maybe we should, May 2nd, would that be enough time to have a lot of the questions asked as far as a 24-hour operation, varying from that, those type of questions, this is one week, enough time?
My understanding of the main issues were more than the 24 hours, so if I know specifically what those questions are, we'll have those answers to you by whenever you want to meet.
So, beyond the, I think we've got several things to Mr. White's point, you've got the 24-hour operation, we've got, I think, a question about the South East parking lot, if it's part of the city board, or what other ideas are coming, to come forward on that. I think we would probably be prudent to have some directional statements regarding signage, I think we don't, we're leaning on that. Other items that this board would like to get out on the table? So, I think, in regards to the parking lot, the, can't Walmart live without that, there's a lot of questions that we have, meaning not tear down those buildings, not putting up blank space there, not putting a parking lot that fronts, I mean, I guess it could be torn down, but at least not a parking lot.
We're talking this?
Yes, we are.
Okay. To, to leave the buildings alone?
We don't want a parking lot, a full block on 63rd Street.
I totally agree, that's, that's definitely something that nobody's going to want a 63rd Street to become a parking lot. The only one you've got to find is now is the Southeast Lot, which is .39 of an acre, next to the FOP, but we would say, yes, no parking lot there.
On the, on those two pieces of property? Okay.
63rd.
63rd Street.
Okay.
Because on the 24-hour parking, it must size the signs.
Okay. And if I may ask for a question of clarification, I don't want to bring up more issues, but I also don't want to have to.
Right.
The issue on the parking that's on the east side of the building, my limited understanding of the design guidelines was in lieu of that, that a 10-foot parking, a grass area could be placed along the side of Blue Ridge Boulevard there? If, if that's, is that still an issue for the board that we need to address? That's my question.
I just wanted, no parking over there, I don't know what staff agreed to as far as the, I was assuming it was going to be set back 30 feet.
It's going to be set back 30 feet, that that was going to be a green space. I certainly have told them this, I understand that.
Could, could, could we be allowed to try to work through that with staff? Okay, so for now, we'll just, and we'll come back with whatever that answer is, but again, I don't mean to be redundant, but the 24-hour situation, the commission does not want parking facilities on the properties on 63rd Street, and you want the size of the monuments taken down to at least five feet, is that?
If, if the monument signs are going to be utilized, they'll need to fall within the standards, our guidelines.
Okay.
Then anyone else in Raytown has to.
Okay, I, okay.
I guess I'll put something on the record, as any should. The idea of the buildings being taken down on 63rd, you know, what our problem having right now is that change is hard, growth is hard, to bring something new to Raytown, which is very likely, because Raytown's very passionate about the city, passionate about the things they've done. I was on Raytown reaching for tomorrow, I've been to Walmart, I'm sure I've been to it since I started, and my nearest on the commission, one thing I think we've always said is that our next project should be better than our last project. I think Walmart has had a bad rep as being the big box and a member of Work With Community. The things I've seen within their, what they have presented, is that Walmart will Work With Community and will bring things that never really need to happen. You know, even though we say we don't want parking, we don't want parking lots to, to the streets, I understand that, I think what we have right now on 63rd, some of those buildings, I don't think this is the character of what Walmart, Raytown wants to be, I think there's some, I think there's some things we can do, not necessarily have, it could be some green space, it could be some public space that could be done, but I think right now, we need a change. I will go with the commission, but I think I have to put on record my thoughts, and I feel that we need to move forward one way or another and make some quality choices. And I understand the passion, I agree with the passion 100%, but I also know that there's a great many people in Walmart and Raytown who haven't showed up yet, who are in favor of the project. You know, one preferable thing that always happens, a squeaky wheel always gets greased, and tonight was a squeaky wheel. So with that, I'm beholden to the commission, but I just want to be sure that I put my comments on.
Ms. Hartwell?
I was also, Raytown reaching for tomorrow, and I was on those same committees that they've been talking about tonight, and I don't think there's anybody on this board that doesn't think that Raytown needs to change, we need to change, but just wiping out three businesses that are already there until we know what's coming in their place is not fair to those businesses, and I'm sorry, we don't know anything yet.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Real quick, I do want to echo some sentiments brought forward by Mr. Fields, I've lived here my whole life, I've seen a lot of change in this town, and unfortunately, a lot of this change has been things, I've got plenty of vacancies right now, I've heard of that, we see it all the time. So what's the right change? I don't know what the answer is to that, none of us will ever know until it's done, we'll figure it out hindsight, but, you know, we don't know for certain that this isn't a catalyst that brings other development to this town. As far as the businesses on 63rd Street, I, I, I guess I don't envision seeing those businesses gone because they've always been there. I, I, I do see Walmart facing Blue Ridge because that was the orientation of the previous property, the previous structure on that property, so that just, from that point, I have that point of reference to draw from. As far as the property owners go, there was to be some change along 63rd Street, I, I would hope that they are settling out and not just going to pack up and leave, and I think the free market society is probably the latter. So, you know, appreciate all the thought that's gone into this, so we either change or we become a result of it, and right now, I'm not always happy with the results, so to speak.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
I was on the city council, I'm happy two other developers come into town, and I talked to all those business owners along there, and every single one of them says, why doesn't the city work with us? Why doesn't the city make it as possible for us to upgrade our property, as they do other businesses that want to come into Raytown and give them every kind of CID or chip or whatever it is? Why don't, why doesn't the city work with us? We've been here forever, and we want to stay, but nobody's listening. It seems to me it's time we started listening to people, if we can help them improve their buildings, we won't have to take their, their businesses won't go anywhere unless somebody gives them a fortune for it, yes.
Mr. Whitefoot? I was going to make the motion to continue this to a date certain of May 2nd, and three questions to be answered, which are, hours of operation, will it be acceptable that it's not going to be 24 hours? If monument signs are utilized, they will fall within the guideline standards of any other business in Raytown, and Southeast Lot, .39 acre, they're on 63rd Street, along, I'm sorry, all of that along 63rd Street will not be parking lot, but right now, what you have shown is the Southeast, .39 acre. I'm sorry, that wasn't very articulate, it's been a long day and night.
My second motion.
Here we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As an alternative, you could make that motion in the form of an affirmative motion to approve the plan, subject to those additional conditions, and state your feelings on those issues, and put it to Walmart that way, that these are the, these are the conditions that's going to go to the, to the Board of Alderman.
There's a motion on the table.
Any, any?
Can you explain anything what happened the first time you voted? It didn't work out, or, I don't understand what went on.
It was a tie.
It was a tie.
Oh, it was a tie, okay.
It was a tie, and we didn't have it.
But there's a motion on the table with the second.
So there is a motion on the table with the second, all right? We can't amend that motion at this time.
I don't feel comfortable going with what the attorney is, is suggesting, because I feel like it would be pressuring the ones who voted to deny, and I don't know, I'm just going to get some more information, I'm, I'm sorry, that might be the table, let me get some more information.
All right, with that, would you have a motion in the second, Ms. Stock, would you call a vote?
And the motion is just to table it till next Thursday and receive the answer to those three questions, okay? Stock is yes, Mr. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hartwell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitefoot?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Why can't I answer this?
Okay, so we will be back next Thursday, 7:00 in this chamber.
Is there public comment then?
We will be holding a full meeting, just as you get tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There won't be a new public hearing.
There will not be a new public hearing.
Every time they ask. Yeah, but they closed the public hearing.
We take a most public hearing.
Okay, I'm not, I mean, there may be time for comment, but it will not be a formal legal public hearing.
Did everybody in the audience hear that?
Yeah, when I said, you hear it, it's all with all.
Pardon me?
No, you stopped the public comment.
We did, we did stop the public comment, there is a notice, notification period required for a public hearing, in order for us to meet that, we do have to have the two days advance notice at least in the paper and notice to send out, we cannot meet that by, it's just not naturally possible.
So the public can't make a comment on the hours for the thing that you guys talked about?
We, we may allow a comment, but it will not be, it will not be as a open public hearing.
Okay.
So that, you know, we'll have to take that into advisement, and we'll allow that in forty minutes. Mr. Benson? Okay, Mr. Benson, real quick, I think we might push together, I haven't touched the agenda.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening, staff, thank you for your time and diligence, timekeeper, thank you for keeping us on track, for camera people, thank you as always, and the applicants, thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, good night. Oh, well, before we close that, showing how tired I am, would you get a motion to close the meeting?